We are live.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise as you're able and join me in the welcoming of city council and the playing of the national anthem and the reading of the invocation.
Morning ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December city council meeting. I'd ask that you remain standing if you're able, as I read an invocation for tonight's meeting. As we come together today, we recognize the great responsibilities laid upon us. Our council will always strive to understand the needs of the people we serve and to use power wisely and well. Our purpose is to establish and maintain a city of prosperity and righteousness where freedom prevails and where justice rules. We acknowledge the rich history of this land, which includes the Anishinaabe and the Haud of Shoney peoples. Today, there are many First Nations, Maori and Inuit peoples who live and work in the city. The intent of this acknowledgement is to recognize our responsibility to use and take care of these lands responsibly and respectfully while remembering the generations past and the generations yet to come. We respect and seek to continue and promote the longstanding relationships with this area's First Nations, the Six Nations of the Grand River First Nation, and the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, and the indigenous peoples who reside within the city of Brantford. Let us also not forget those who've served our community, who are no longer with us, so we continue to do the work that we must in their memory. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Counselor Van Tolborg.
Here.
Counselor Carpenter.
Present.
Counselor Sluss.
Present.
Counselor McCurry.
Here.
Counselor Sullivan.
Present.
Counselor Samwell.
Here.
Counselor Hunt.
Present.
Counselor Martin.
Here.
Counselor Caputo.
Present.
Counselor Sikoli.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Present.
The chair role calls been taken.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Does any member of council have to declare a particular interest regarding any item on tonight's agenda? Counselor Sullivan.
Item 12.1.2, the Blue Box Program. It's regarding a competitor for my full-time employment.
Okay. Counsel Governor.
Yes, item 13.1, Code of Conduct Investigation. I'm told I can speak to it, but I can't vote on it, so I wanted to clear that.
Okay. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else? Oh, Counsel Caputo, sorry.
Under, I guess, the budget, it would be for the Police Services Board. I have a son who's on the auxiliary.
So that's 12.2.2.
Yes.
Yeah. Actually, 12.2.3, I think. So we'll deal with that separately, noting your conflict. Seeing no other conflicts? This confirmed as 12.1.2. Counselor Sullivan. 12.2, good, okay. So primarily, we have separation of items, the following item, there's one item that's already boiled, there's more than one now, that's been separated. We have an amendment, that's item 12.1.1, that's the Act of Transportation, the missing sidewalk links. We also have 12.1.2 with the Blue Blocks Recycling Program, Counselor Sullivan's conflict. We also have 12.2.3, which is year two budget confirmation, Counselor Caputo's conflict. We also have the... 13... Yeah, 13.1. All right. Somebody else wants something separate? I'll go to Counselor Sluss first.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if the John Noble Home budget is contained in the... in the budget that's presented this evening. If it is, I have a conflict of interest with that.
Yeah, that's the item that's already been separated, that's 12.2.3. So we'll note the conflicts of both you and Counselor Caputo. Counselor Sullivan.
12.2.2 and 12.3.6.
12.2.2, that's year two budget confirmation. And you said 12 point... Citizens Remuneration Review Committee. Counsel McCurry, did you ever hand it?
12.4.1.
So, running by law amendment, 571 West Street. Counselor Martin.
Thank you. Are you doing separations?
Yep.
Would you like me to move the motion for that?
We're just determining which items are going to be separated.
It usually requires a motion.
No.
No?
Okay.
I'll separate 12.1.4.
That's Branford Airport Board Report. Something else? Okay. So, I'll now take a motion then to, for those items that have not been separated. Counsel Martin, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move seconded by Counselor McCurry that all items contained within the committee reports, 12.1 to 12.4, not separated for discussion purposes, be approved.
All right. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the title of the items we're about to vote on?
Through the chair, the following items are subject to the vote. So from the committee, the whole operations report, we have items 12.1.3, Branford 2050 Vision Project Update, 12.1.5, Mary Street East Ward Neighborhood Traffic Safety Review, 12.1.6, 2024 Climate Change Action Plan Annual Update, 12.1.7, amendments to the Branford Source Protection Plan. From the Estimates Committee Reports, item 12.2.1, 2025 City Budget Priorities, Public Engagement Campaign Findings. From the Committee of the Whole Planning Administration Report, Items 12.3.1, Brand Land Trust Pond Property on Sedena Oaks Drive, 12.3.2, Second Phase Neighborhood Consultation Results for Three Potential Heritage Conservation Districts, 12.3.3, Downtown Entertainment District Options Report, 12.3.4, Economic Development Strategy, 12.3.5, Branford Truth and Reconciliation Action Plan, Recommended Next Steps, 12.3.7, Annual Update on Street Naming, 12.3.8, Olmers Bylaw Update, 12.3.9, People Master Plan Status Update. And those are all the items that are to be voted on right now. All items not separated for discussion purposes carries unanimously on recorded votes. Members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Sluss, McCurry, Hunt, Van Tolborg, Samwell, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So we have no statutory public hearing on tonight's agenda. There are no recognitions of achievement on this evening's agenda, and we have one proclamation on tonight's agenda. I believe Counselor Samwell, you have that proclamation. If you would please state your secondor and then read the proclamation.
Sure. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Van Tolborg. Whereas, or sorry, Bell Let's Talk, January 22nd, 2025. Whereas, January 22nd, 2025, March the 15th, Annual Bell Let's Talk Day, a day of conversation, support, and positive change for mental health. Whereas, the city of Branford supports positive mental health for all citizens and members of the community and seeks to improve the lives of the one in five Canadians who will experience mental illness or mental health issues in their lifetime. And whereas, raising the Bell Let's Talk tag is a visible reminder to the members of the community that mental health matters, that help is available, and that we are committed to creating change. And whereas, Bell Let's Talk Day promotes mental health awareness, acceptance, and action built on four key pillars, fighting stigma, improving access to care, supporting world-class research, and leading by example in the workplace mental health. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the City of Branford hereby proclaims Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025, as Bell Let's Talk Day in the city of Branford. Thank you.
All right, I'll call the vote on the proclamation.
The proclamation carries unanimously on recorded votes. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Counselors Sullivan, Sluss, McCurry, Hunt, Van Tolborg, Samwell, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
Right, we'll move into presentation delegations. We have one presentation this evening. I'll call upon Jeffrey Shapiro, J.D., L.L.M., Investigator, ADR Chambers, Integrity Commissioner's Office, to come forward to provide a presentation regarding item 13.1, Code of Conduct Investigation, Integrity Commissioner Report. Believe he's coming in virtually, there he is.
Mr. Redd. May I begin?
Yeah.
Great, okay, welcome. Good evening, everyone, thank you. It's an honor to be here. My name is Jeffrey Shapiro. I'm an investigator with ADR Chambers, Office of the Integrity Commissioner. I received a file with a delegation of powers from Marvin J. Huberman, who is the city of Branford's integrity commissioner. He asked me to inquire and to investigate and prepare a report, subject to his review with regard to a complaint filed by Counselor Sikoli alleging that Counselor Carpenter violated Branford's Code of Conduct. I understand that you all have a copy of my report dated November 25, 2024, which is a self-contained report that provides an overview of the matter, includes my investigative process, findings, and recommendation, all of which I made in conjunction with the integrity commissioner. So rather than read through the report, I like to give an overview of it and highlight a few points and read through just a few particular sections. So in terms of overview, section, well, first of all, the report is 19 pages long. Sections one through three are essentially introductory sections. Section four, which is pages two to five of the report, contain the pleadings. That would be the complaint, the Carpenter, Counselor Carpenter's response, and the reply of Counselor Sikoli. I will read section 4.1 of the complaint, that's on page four. That's the complaint, as it's, the complaint itself is rather brief, and it provides a little bit of anchor of what we are talking about today. Essentially, the complaint indicates that on April 18th, 2023, and November 14th, 2023, the city of Branford Council held in camera meetings to discuss a private confidential matter pertaining to the disposition of lands. On June 25, 2024, at a city council meeting, Ward Four Counselor Richard Carpenter disclosed private and confidential information about the discussions that were held in camera. The complaint then cites to a YouTube video of the meeting of the June 25th, 2024 meeting, and concludes, this is in direct violation of chapter 16 of the Branford's bylaw. Now, I wasn't provided a transcript of the, of that meeting, so I essentially created my own, which part of it is in the report on page three and four. And really, the key part of there is that at the end of a discussion, the keywords I have underlined, but of course, that whole resolution was taken out, referring to the in-camera discussions. I believe that was Counselor Sikoli, and then the resolution that was put in place was to be taken, take that piece out. But that's, that's the complaint itself. Essentially, is alleging that, the complaint essentially alleged that Counselor Carpenter basically disclosed what were in-camera discussions, and then singled out certain counselors in terms of their voting rights, or voting records that occurred in camera. Section five of the report, which is pages five to nine, is essentially where I recorded the evidence. It's, it's, it just records the interviews that I held with the applicant, or not the applicant, with the complainant, respondent, and a witness, that witness was the mayor. Now, I noticed that in reading a report tonight, there's actually two section sixes. The first section six is just listing the key code section that's involved. The key code provision is, is section in the Code of Conduct, 16.5.1, which... is entitled Confidential Information, Sclosure Prohibited. The next section is also cited, and that provides the definitions for that section. Then, what's in really intended to be the main section six is the body of the report from pages 11 through 17. That includes my actual findings and analysis. On page 11 to 12 is the incident. Essentially, in this case, there really is very little dispute about the actual incident. There was a council meeting, it's recorded, it's a matter of public record. I will cite, read a few of my findings here, again, on page 11. Essentially, that this dealt with, the background of this was the disposition of the South Branford Homes property. So, the city had purchased properties a long time ago for a project that never happened, and we're now discussing how to dispose of it. So, starting in 2022, the counselor, and these are my findings, the counsel had a series of confidential and camera meetings, discussed how to best dispose of the properties, including considering the effects of the very strategy on tenants. I'll just go to the next paragraph. And paraphrasing, essentially, there were different discussions of what to do, and ultimately, after this series of those meetings, the council voted in camera to use this, to use one of the methods, and that, the in-camera resolution was brought to an open session of council on June 25th, 2024. So that's really the background. As I find, the recording shows, the discussion on the topic lasted for approximately an hour. The meeting included several members of the public, delegating a council, there were various questions and so forth. If I may just read in two paragraphs here from my report. Towards the end of the meeting, starting at 1:52 on the recording, the respondent spoke specifically addressing the media and the tenants. He proceeded to disclose the initial staff report and history of the amendments that occurred in the in-camera meetings. He specifically disclosed how the complainant and another counselor voted, which effectively tied them to voting for the proposal, which effectively would result in evicting the tenants. He moved to defer the entire disposition topic for one cycle, which motion was carried. Next paragraph. It appears that the respondent was fully within his rights to disagree with the proposal and to seek to defer it. However, it appears that he could have done so without reference to the in-camera meeting or without naming any counselors and their votes. Following the vote to defer, and prior to starting the next topic, the respondent, it was fine being Counselor Carpenter, on his own initiative, publicly apologized for naming the counselors. Another finding I have in the report, it appears the custom among council has been not to disclose the discussion that occurred in camera meetings, and not to disclose voting records in the way the respondent did. So that's essentially what happened. And then, in my report... On page 14, I discuss whether or not this was a breach of the Code of Conduct, and essentially, I found that it was. The Code of Conduct, again, at section 16.5.1, provides that members shall keep confidential information confidential. Members will refrain from disclosing or distributing confidential information, whether such confidential information is received at in-camera meetings, through confidential reports or through other means. Members shall not misuse confidential information, such as it may cause detriment to the city, council, or local board. And then, or, a council, or use council information acquired by virtue of their office for personal or private gain. I then discuss, in the report, a little bit whether a exemption applied. I found that it did not. And then, on chap, well, section seven and eight are then my conclusions and recommendations. I concluded that the disclosure of the voting rights, or of the voting history that occurred in camera was a violation, and particularly naming particular counselors, in this case, Counselor Sikoli, how she voted was a violation. Looks like I just have a half a minute or two left. So, I refer to...
Mr. Shapiro, if you need more time, we can ask for a motion to extend.
Okay. I'm close to concluding, I just would need another minute or two.
Go ahead.
Okay. So in terms of the recommendations, which is section eight... So, over there, under the Code of Conduct, and consistent with the municipal act, so I would have the authority to make a recommendation as to an appropriate disposition, appropriate remedy, or real action. And they're really under the municipal act, apparently, actually, this is actually discussion right now, in, publicly in the papers right now, but under the act, as it's currently written, the real options are a reprimand or suspension of the remuneration paid to the member in respect of his or her services as a member for a period of up to 90 days. What I recommended, I tried to balance some of the various concerns here. I wrote in the report, given that this disclosure appeared purposeful, the respondent began his remarks by addressing the media and provided specific dates of the prior in-camera meetings, yet the respondent immediately apologized, a modest penalty is appropriate. Thus, I recommend that the Branford Council, one, issue a formal reprimand of the respondent, Counselor Carpenter, in relation to the violation of the confidential provisions of the Code of Conduct during the June 25, 2024 council meeting. And, two, just more generally, consider providing further guidance, including adopting rules or amendments to the Code of Conduct, by greater clarity to members as to their obligations of confidentiality and permissible disclosures following in-camera sessions, including once council discusses the matter coming out of an in-camera session. Three quick points. I believe that Counselor Sikoli and the complaint, or, well, subsequent discussions, raised the issue that she thought that this disclosure might have been tied to the potential mayor's race. I didn't find that the timeframe bore that out. In terms of everyone's participation, everyone participated in the process, everyone was straightforward, I greatly appreciated that. Everyone actually struck me as pretty professional in their discussions, which I also appreciated. And finally, in terms of a reprimand, that's something that people often get confused with. So, a reprimand is usually something in of itself, is just simply a public reprimand of, you know, we find that there was a violation, and Counselor so-and-so, in this case, Counselor Carpenter, is hereby publicly reprimanded for breaching the Code of Conduct. It's usually considered separate than a suspension of pay. So, that is my submissions, or my presentation in a nutshell, and I understand there may be questions, if you do them, certainly.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Shapiro. We've gone a few minutes past the 10 minutes, but that's fine. Member, you'll be available to answer questions any members may have during the period in which we debate this, unless if somebody wants to ask a question, I'll need an extension because we've gone about 13 minutes, but Mr. Shapiro will stay online for anyone to ask many questions during your speaking portion of the debate. Okay. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Shapiro. If you would stay in the virtual inbox, we can call you back, we need you.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move then to the clerk's reporting communications. I believe Counsel Hunt, you have that motion.
I do, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Carpenter, that the clerk's report on communications for December 2024 be received.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Call the vote.
The clerk's report on communication carries unanimously on recorded vote of 11 to 0. Members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Sluss, McCurry, Hunt, Van Tolborg, Samwell, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
All right, so move on to the minutes. Counsel McCurry, I understand you've got the motion, the minutes list on the agenda, and please state your secondor.
You are correct, Mayor. Counselor Martin is the secondor. I move that the following minutes be adopted, 11.1, Special Counsel of November 19, of this year, and 11.2, City Council of November 26, 2024.
Right, I'll call the vote.
The adoption of the minutes carries unanimously on recorded vote of 11 to 0. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Counselors Sullivan, Sluss, McCurry, Hunt, Van Tolborg, Samwell, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
Thank you. So now move into the committee reports, and if anyone doesn't have any objection, I'd like to move up item 13.1, which is the Integrity Commissioner Report. We do have Mr. Shapiro on a hourly retainer, and I think there's some people here that would like to see the debate. So, I'm going to ask a mover and a secondor to place the item on the floor, which is from the Integrity Commissioner's report, that his report be received. So I can get a mover and a secondor to put that on the floor, please? Moved by Counsel Sikoli, the secondor. Counselor Martin. All right. Yes, Counsel Carpenter has asked that he speak to this. First, I think that's appropriate and orderly, and in accordance with the rules of procedural fairness. So, go ahead, Counsel Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. It's been said that passion is a good thing to have as a human being. Well, I'm very passionate about my existence. On June 25th, 2024, I was concerned about whether residents will be permitted to stay in their homes or be evicted, possibly become homeless. I became very concerned, and during my passionate debate, I did cross the line when I disclosed some in-camera information about how a vote went and who voted. I apologize for that time when I realized my overreach, and I apologize again today. I have tremendous respect for the Integrity Commissioner and the Office of the Integrity Commissioner. I accept his recommendation wholeheartedly and respect his opinion on this matter. He does raise the question with regard to 16.51's language, and I quote, "The members of council will refrain from disclosing or distributing of confidential information until council discusses the confidential information at a public meeting that is open to the public." He does recommend to consider providing further guidance, including adopting rules or amendments to the Code of Conduct to provide greater clarity to members as to their obligations and confidentiality and permissible disclosure following an in-camera session, including once council discusses the matter coming out of an in-camera and a public session. Once again, I accept the Integrity Commissioner's recommendations in his report, and I take full responsibility for my actions on June 25th, 24, and 25th of our meeting. Thank you, members of council, and I'd like to speak to those in the gallery and those online. Yeah, I'd like to ask a favor of you. It's the Christmas season and a time for compassion, understanding, and goodwill toward others. Can I ask you to show that Christmas spirit and refrain from any negativity towards this matter on anyone during the holiday season, online or otherwise? Can I ask you... Can I ask you to look in on your neighbor or friend who may be alone during these holidays? And please think of others who are less fortunate and could use your assistance. In closing, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year. And I won't be voting on this issue because it's a conflict for me to vote on, Mayor, and I will be leaving the council chairman for the discussion, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Carpenter, for your professionalism and respect for the decision-making process. So the floor is now open uh for debate discussion. Okay, Counselor Sikoli.
I guess I'll go next here. Um, in August, we sat up here and we unanimously passed a resolution that spoke to increasing penalties for municipal counselors who violate our Code of Conduct. Um, because I think it's it's reasonable that people recognize that we, as elected officials, should be operating with a degree of integrity and morality. And in order to maintain this integrity as a governing body, we have rules, we have policy, and we have procedures that we must respect. That prevents this council from turning into the Wild West. Yet in June, we witnessed a premeditated and intentional attack on two members of this council by another. A move that violated our Code of Conduct and left the rest of us who actually respect the rules unable to defend ourselves because doing so would have resulted in violating our confidentiality. When asked by the investigator to provide a response, Counselor Carpenter merely offered that he apologized for his actions. And while appreciated, you cannot apologize away a Code of Conduct violation. An apology would indicate there was some personal offense taken by this complaint, but this complaint is about something different. It's about the integrity of this council. Um, so I do have uh an amendment that I would like to offer to this, if you think that's appropriate now.
First, let me see, does anybody want to speak to this before we have a amendment? Saying Counselor Hunt.
I'd just like clarification if the respondent is not able to vote, is the complainant able to vote?
Yeah, the answer to that, I would rule that uh on your point of clarification, that is correct. Under the Municipal Act, members of council are entitled to vote on any issue unless they're excluded from doing so by virtue of other sections of the Municipal Act or primarily the Conflict of Interest Act. Uh, I think I would be acting contrary to the law if I directed a member of council not to be able to vote and participate in this. So long as they don't have a conflict of interest. Anyway, any other comment before I take the amendment? All right, Counselor Sikoli, floor is yours for your amendment.
Thank you, so my read, my amendment will uh read as follows, and I do believe the clerk, the clerk has a copy of this to put on the screen. And I will be seeking a second or uh once I get this on the floor. Um, so whereas the council, the corporation of the city of Brantford holds their Code of Conduct in the highest regard as the guideline to maintain integrity, transparency, and decorum of their proceedings. And whereas Counselor Richard Carpenter has demonstrated a violation of the oath of confidentiality as outlined in the city of Brantford's Code of Conduct. And whereas the Integrity Commissioner, in this investigation, ruled that the transgression by Counselor Carpenter appeared purposeful. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation of the city of Brantford hereby orders a penalty against Counselor Carpenter of a suspension of remuneration for thirty days commencing on January first, two thousand and twenty-five. And if I may speak to the amendment. Um, I do want to say that it takes a lot of courage to do the right thing. And it took courage to file this complaint, and it was a decision that I personally reflected on for nearly two months. Gathering the nerve to face the inevitable uh victim blaming and entering the arena of public opinion, as you have seen today. And it'll take courage for this entire council to hopefully do the right thing and enforce a reasonable penalty against a colleague. This is not easy, but doing nothing is not an option, in my opinion. Imposing no penalty would result in chaos and it would be setting a precedence that the the rules mean nothing around here. And even though I find it hard to attach an appropriate penalty to the very intentional and deliberate targeted attack on two members of this council, um, I know that um I know that we'll end up doing the right thing here, and despite all of this, I'm still reasonable enough to understand that this is far from the worst thing that a counselor could do. Um, and I know that a ninety-day penalty would perhaps maybe would have been too much. So I feel like a thirty-day suspension of remuneration is more than fair in this, in this case. And I hope I have someone's support up here.
Sorry, Counselor Sikoli, again, a second or was?
Counselor Car- um, Caputo.
Caputo, good, thank you. Uh, speaking order, I have Counselor Sullivan here next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I understand where Counselor Sikoli is coming from. Uh, I understand that we do need to look at our Code of Conduct, it's 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 hold and flawed, it needs some work uh in order to hold these things at a higher level. But I think we have an Integrity Commissioner for a reason. He's giving us his recommendation, and I think we need to stick with his recommendation.
Next, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things we have to remember is, this is not the first time. This is just the first time where it was blatant, premeditated, and easy to prove because it was all on, recorded on, at the council meeting. Uh, Counselor Carpenter routinely votes against going in camera on items. And I believe that gives him the moral authority to leak that information because he voted against going in camera. That's strictly my opinion, but that's one that I hold. Um, Counselor Carpenter likes to tell a story about bullying where he intervenes and and stops someone from from picking on a woman. And he always ends it with, we have a moral obligation to stand up to bullies. And that's what I intend to do here tonight, I intend to stand up to the bully that is Counselor Carpenter. He's been a bully for over two decades as a, as a member of council.
Counselor Martin, would you please direct your comments to the facts of this particular Integrity Commissioner's complaint?
Well, I believe that uh this is all relevant because it speaks to his character, which is what this.
All right, but we also have in our Code of Conduct that we will not unfairly impugn other members. So just ask you to bear that in mind as you make your comments.
Uh, my comments will be all truthful and I don't believe that it's against the rules. Um, he's bullied staff, he's bullied council colleagues, he's bullied uh his business partner. And he's he's bullied his uh, he's even bullied volunteers at at a council meeting. So I think that speaks to his integrity and and uh he spoke highly of the Integrity Commissioner and that he stands by his findings. Yet in the past, he even disrespected the Integrity Commissioner of the day and devalued member of staff years ago when he voted against sanctioning the counselor that was found guilty of sexual harassment against a female staff member.
All right, can we, Counselor Martin, please, I'm gonna direct you, you're gonna keep doing this, I'm gonna direct that you're out of order, all right? Please confine your comments to this particular integrity.
In my opinion, we should be going for the full ninety-day suspension of remuneration. And after I hear the comments of other counselors, if there's any chance of that passing, I'll move that as an amendment.
All right, uh, we'll move on to Counselor Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After reading this report and being here that night, um, I am the other counselor that was called into question on what my comments were uh that were made in camera. And um, I was shocked uh that it was brought up. And at the same time, I did accept Counselor Carpenter's apology. As if I remember correctly, he stood up and apologized to both Counselor Sikoli and myself. But we are governed by Code of Conduct confidentiality, and there are rules and there are ramifications when those rules are taken and they're broken. This is my first term of council, I've been here for two years and I understand that wholeheartedly as I understand anytime a confidentiality uh comments have to be put into perspective. To have it come from a counselor who's been sitting on this to at this panel for the last thirty years was a little shocking. Um, and to to quote me, uh, pretty much seemed like it was a preemptive uh action. But I do uh support the fact that uh thirty days is is the proper penalty, I would not seek the maximum. And like our life lessons are, we reap what we sow later than we sow, more than we sow. And in this particular case, we have to not only look at this current council, but any upcoming council on how we actually treat our Code of Conduct as well as our confidentiality. And uh, so I will be supporting this motion um as we go tonight, thank you.
Counselor Sluss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just entering my thirtieth uh year of of public service. And this is only the second time that I've had to deal with something like this. So it tells you the severity that something must reach before it gets to this level. Um, it's not something to be taken lightly. If it took thirty years for this to uh bubble to the top and be brought to this body, um, I think it speaks volumes as to the severity of what it is. Unfortunately, it makes for a very awkward and uncomfortable setting to be sitting here discussing a colleague. And and I'm sure everybody sitting here is somewhat uncomfortable and feeling very awkward. Uh, I know as one member of council, I am. But we're here as a result of an in-camera meeting and the investigation of its aftermath. For those that don't know, and there's probably people watching that don't know, an in-camera meeting is heavily regulated by provincial legislation. Uh, there's a very narrow number of subjects that that can be talked to in an in-camera meeting. These in-camera meetings are attended by all members of council. They're attended by the appropriate staff for what's being discussed that night, and they're they're also attended by city lawyers to give guidance as to it, make sure that procedure is properly followed. Every participant confirms and agrees with an oath of confidentiality when they enter that that room and when they participate in the discussion of whatever the subject is at that particular meeting. According to the Integrity Commissioner, after a lengthy investigation, that oath was broken by a member of council. The commis- the commissioner suggested a range of penalties. Uh, on the floor is is the low end of the financial penalty that can be administered uh under this procedure that we're doing this evening according to our Integrity Commissioner. On the floor is a penalty that reflects the low end of that penalty. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm prepared uh to support the low end, which is thirty-day uh sanction to uh to the offending.
Counselor Hunt.
Just wanted to clarify that we were only speaking to the amendment on the floor. Um, seeking, I plan to bring forward a a further amendment.
All right, so that amendment of an amendment?
No, that would be an amendment after this amendment has been dealt.
Okay, so well, as we would follow in our procedure, this would have to be defeated, and then you could put another amendment on the floor, so any other discussion? Counselor Van Tilburg.
I must say, it uh, it is rather uncomfortable being here. Becoming a judge and jury, I guess. I believe that these procedures actually should be fully independent, it's just a belief that I have. That we shouldn't be the ones that are grabbing the penalty from out of the air and applying the penalty. What I do uh, I think this, I guess that's about what I want to state, state with regards to the amendment on the floor, I do have more things with regards to the issue at hand, so uh that's all I want to state. I think in the future, if there is a system that has is taken completely out of council hands because it can be politicized, it should be, that's all.
Yep, um, I myself. Yeah, I agree that this is very awkward. Uh, we're uh making a decision that has a personal impact upon a member of council. And I said this, I very much appreciate Counselor Carpenter's professionalism and the way in which she has approached uh the debate tonight. Uh, I understand, Counselor Van Tilburg, your concern that why isn't this done totally by some other outside agency? Not only investigation, but also the penalty. And I think it it is, although it's as awkward as it is for us, I think we have the responsibility to make the decision because it's about our Code of Conduct, it's about our rules of conduct for our meetings. It's about our our uh procedural rules. And I think it's up to us to decide uh, make the decisions, how they're to be handled when we have a member that breaches a member of our Code of Conduct. And for me, it's, I I appreciate the input given by the Integrity Commissioner in respect to the, you know, the severity of this. Uh, I do take, I I I do, and I'm concerned about the fact that uh it does, this was not in the heat of the moment of a particularly protracted uh debate. It, there appeared to be some premeditation, which I think the Integrity Commissioner Report talks about. For me, the the important thing is, this is the first time that this council is dealing with the Code of Conduct. Uh, actually, the first time, I think, in probably nine or ten years. And so we're setting a precedent that will have an impact upon each of us in the future and will have an impact on how we conduct and carry ourselves, and also the counselors that follow us. And thus, I think we also have to consider, which I don't believe the Integrity Commissioner did, and that's the question of deterrence. Is there something here that uh, uh, that we should consider in the way of deterrence? A decision that would deter other members of council, either this council or a future council, from considering or attempting to do a premeditated breach of the Code of Conduct? I don't think a reprimand is sufficient to establish the necessary deterrence to avoid this happening again. And on the basis of providing uh at the lower end of the penalty thirty days, uh, I think it it recognizes that uh the severity of the infraction is is on a scale of one to ten. It's certainly not a ten in terms of, you could have a breach of an in-camera meeting that that extracts a tremendous damage upon the city, that's not the case here. It has for certain members, and thus I think there is some severity. But for me, it's the deterrent value, I think the reprimand will not be a deterrence. It um basically says, if you breach the Code of Conduct and if you're, say you're sorry, then there's no impact. And I think the end result could be that other members might be um incentivized to consider breaching the Code of Conduct. Thus, I'm gonna support this amendment uh as, on the basis of providing an element of deterrence to avoid this happening in the future. And thus, not as a reflection on Counselor Carpenter, but as an attempt to make sure that we're enforcing our rules and our Code of Conduct and that there are some consequences when there's an intentional breach. So I'll go to Counselor Martin.
Yeah, just to clarify, a member of this council said that directly um Integrity Commissioner's report recommends a reprimand. But my reading of it is a reprimand or a suspension of pay. If we get the investigator to comment on that, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Shapiro, you still there? Yeah, yeah, okay, so on page seventeen of the report, turning to page eighteen, uh, that was just listing that that those are the penalties that the the council is authorized to impose. So the or is just what is potentially authorized. And then after that, I made a recommendation, and I made a recommendation of of a rec- reprimand. And obviously, it's a recommendation to council, council knows the uh, the players, if you will, better than anyone, and the, you know, the facts on the ground, so it's, it is a recommendation, um, and I've heard various comments, um, and there are, I certainly considered different, different ways to go with this whole situation. Deterrence, you know, that's something you have to weigh, what is deterrence? And whatever council chooses, obviously, that's, that's fine with me, I made a recommendation. I want to think, thinking of a reprimand, it is a public reprimand, it's on the city website. And in theory, it's permanent, so it's always out there. So I I wouldn't understate the uh impact of a reprimand. But that being said, ultimately, council will come to its own conclusion of what it feels would be necessary.
That's fine, thank you. Any other uh comment before I take the vote?
Any other comment before I take the vote? All right. Let's take the vote on the amendment, please.
The amendment carries on a recorded vote of six to four. Members of council voting in favor. Counselors Sloss, McCurry, Marn, Caputo, Sikoli, Mayor Davis, members opposed, Counselors Sullivan, Hunt, Van Tilburg, and Samwell.
Right. So, to the resolution as amended, any discussion? Saying, Counselor Hunt.
Yes, I just wanted to recognize that Counselor Carpenter has been a member of this council for, I believe, 32 years. And I did ask the clerk to go back over the course of that 32 years to see if there had ever been a code of conduct complaint filed in 32 years against Counselor Carpenter, and he has indicated that he was unable to come up with anything. And I think it would be remiss of this council to not recognize that our integrity commissioner, who we entrust to do these investigations, made a recommendation and that the recommendation of the integrity commissioner was a formal reprimand, which as Mr. Shapiro has just pointed out, is is not not just something that goes in a file. It is a formal reprimand. I believe that we should give the integrity commissioner, who we we pay to conduct these investigations, that we should give the recommendations of that integrity commissioner a real hard look when we're making decisions and not 30 days, to me, may seem like somebody thinks it's the bottom line, but 30 days, it's not necessarily the bottom line. A financial penalty of one week could be the the bottom. I would like to actually ask the integrity commissioner a question based on his recommendation, and that is, was the recommendation based on investigations of a similar nature in other municipalities?
Sure. I did not find really the sort of fact-specific, similar case, so I've tried to use my experience and and talking with my colleagues about, you know, put it in context and come up with something that is appropriate.
And how long have you been investigating code of conduct complaints for municipalities?
Oh, me specifically, code of conduct? I've I've been doing two years, and our team has been doing this for years and years. We have members who've been doing it for, I believe, 20-plus years.
Well, the the experience of our integrity commissioner is certainly not not without weight as well. Anyway, those are my comments. My my amendment, I feel, is probably not going to pass, so I will not make the amendment. I just wanted to get on the record that I think some of those other things should have been taken into account.
Clerk, do you want to make a point of clarification?
Yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to correct the statement, Counselor Hunt. I didn't say that he didn't have code of conduct complaints. I stated I couldn't find, I couldn't confirm or deny that there was any due to the short timeframe.
My apologies to the clerk. I think the discussion was you couldn't find. So there there weren't, there was no record of any code of conduct complaints that were available to be found in 32 years.
Okay. Not seeing any other, oh, Counselor Van Tilburg?
Yeah, so I have a question for our investigator. The, I just want to get it on the record and correct that you, in your investigation, found all parties cooperative, and that also in your finding that you believe that the actions of Counselor Carpenter were deliberate. Is that, is that inaccurate of of my understanding of your report?
Correct. That in terms of the underlying action at the meeting, I've indicated that it appeared, I believe I used the word purposeful.
Purposeful.
And in terms of cooperating, everybody cooperated in the beginning. I believe Counselor Sikoli made some comments about Counselor Carpenter's initial response to the complaint was very limited, and I addressed that in the report. But yes, everyone ultimately did participate.
And the other question I have for you is what I, it appears like it's a gray area, and I was wondering if it was a gray area for you in that in that wording that says confidential items that come open to council, the freedom of what we can speak to, because I do know that staff and sometimes things get released that I wouldn't have expected were released. So so is that a gray area that you that you think, believe we need to address? Or do we address it in this manner in that we, once we've identified a violation that is deliberate and choose a penalty, that that becomes the written rule? What's what's the best way to attach this?
Okay, if I if I understand the question, and I don't want to get too far afield of giving advice to council, so to speak, at this point, and stick to why I'm I'm here today. In terms of, you know, ultimately naming the counselors, while I I raised the issue and I discussed it in the report of of once something goes to a public meeting, how open the door is, clearly naming names was something that that was not unclear to me. That that came out ultimately, that was pretty clear, that that is not to be disclosed. That's not the matter being discussed. Who voted is not, that wasn't the matter that was brought from a confidential in-camera meeting to a public meeting to be discussed. Who voted? The underlying topic is, does this resolution pass or not? Or is there a better way? That, so that was, that's something. When I make comments about clarifying, the issue is, certainly council on an ongoing basis will be having in-camera meetings. And so it may make sense to adopt some kind of procedures when you come out of in-camera meetings of what exactly is now up for public discussion, or what is being reserved that might be discussed at future council meetings or something like that. That's, that would be a policy decision that you might want to consider flushing out your code or something, or having some procedures when you vote to come out of an in-camera session, provide some guidance for for members. In this case, however, certainly there were parts of discussion here that were beyond the line and struck me as clearly beyond the line.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sloss to the amended resolution.
Yes, I'll throw you to the the lawyer. Was the amendment that council made too strong? In in your opinion, did did counsel overstep its its authority on a 30-day suspension?
When you said the lawyer, I I assumed that was not referring to me?
Yes.
Not referring to me, okay.
Yes, he is referring to you.
He is referring to me, okay. No, council did not step out, step beyond its authority. Council has that that ability. I I've made findings. And a recommendation, it's only a recommendation. Council does have the authority, if it wanted to, to go the full 90 days if it so chose. And clearly also, as well, I just to clarify, I'm here as an integrity commissioner, not as a lawyer. And so, just for whatever distinction that that matters, but my understanding is council is certainly well within its rights to feel that the deterrent value, as spoken, is that a reprimand is not enough and 30 days is appropriate. That's council's right.
Thank you.
Counselor Sall.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I've given a lot of thought and reviewed this report. And honestly, I've thought about it so much. But what I wanted to share is I can understand how we got to this point. It was completely heartbreaking to to hear from the citizens of Park Road and their fear of losing their homes. I truly do believe, though, that
Point of order, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight.
Counselor Samwell, go ahead.
I will continue, thank you. So what I want, I guess what I wanted to say is that I really do think that it shouldn't be our council that makes this decision for this penalty. I've listened to what the mayor has said as to why we we would be the right people to do that. And I also think that the integrity commissioner says that there should be a reprimand, and and I completely understand that because doing, you know, we should definitely be taking our code of conduct very seriously. I'm just not sure that 30 days was the right direction for us to go as well. I feel like that could be a little much. Thank you.
Right, and call the vote.
Is there room for a separation? To where it would suggest a violation and a
Absolutely. Well, there's, there's two parts. It's the motion to receive. And there is the 30 days, so I think that's
Separation, please.
Okay. All right, so we'll call the vote first on the clause to receive. Clause A, to receive the integrity commissioner's report.
Clause A carries unanimously on recorded votes, members of council voting in favor. Counselors Van Tilburg, Samwell, Hunt, McCurry, Marn, Sles, Caputo, Sullivan, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
Now we'll go to the amended clause, Clause B.
Clause B carries on a recorded vote of six. Members voting in favor, Mayor Davis, Counselor Sikoli, Counselor Caputo, Sles, Marn, McCurry. Members opposed, Counselor Van Tilburg, Hunt, Samwell, and Sullivan.
All right, we'll now move on to the next item that was separated for discussion purposes. But I can have a mover and a secondary to place all separated items on the floor for discussion. Who has that? Okay, Counselor Van Tilburg, go ahead.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Samwell, that all items in the committee reports, items 12.1, 12.4, separate for discussion, be approved.
All right, so we'll go through the items as they were separated based on numerical numbering. And so the first one would be 12.1.1, which is the act of transportation, missing sidewalk links. And I believe there is an amendment. Okay. Counselor Sles, can, or Van Tilburg, can you? I need one of you to read this amendment. Okay. Well, Counselor Caputo, if you've got it, why don't you do it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Sloss. The amendment's to strike out the referral to the estimates committee and replace it with the following. That the mayor be requested to include a $250,000 allocation for sidewalks in 2025 and 2026 operating budget.
Counselor Hunt, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, well, I was going to be happy to to read Counselor Carpenter's amendment, but my question to staff would be if it's not referred to estimates, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, do we have another estimates committee coming? And in which case, it it's now in the hands of the mayor of the budget. Am I correct?
Yeah, I think procedurally, if you want to do it, I think it it makes sense that instead of the referral, the estimates committee, that it refer to a recommendation to the mayor to be included in the mayor's proposed budget.
Okay, so does the amendment that's on the floor, that the mayor be requested to include $250,000 allocation for sidewalks in the 2025 and 2026 operating budget, is that the best way for this?
I think that's the best way. Counselor Caputo, you okay with that? Yeah. Moving the secondary, okay? All right. All right, excellent point, Counselor Hunt. So amended.
So we are just, sorry, we're we're striking out the word, striking out referring to estimates and just referring this to the mayor. Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, call the vote on that.
The amendment carries on a recorded vote of seven to three, members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Sles, McCurry, Hunt, Van Tilburg, Samwell, Caputo, members opposed, Mayor Davis, Counselor Sikoli, and Martin.
All right, so so amended. Any further discussion on 12.1.1? Well, we didn't actually amend it, but it's still on the floor for debate and voting. We didn't actually amend it, Counselor Martin. We actually, it was kind of a, I guess it's sort of tag along part of this resolution, instead of it being an amendment to the estimates committee, just came to me directly. Anyways, any further discussion regarding act of transportation, missing sidewalk links? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. I did a yes. Yeah, yeah.
Item 12.1.1 carries on a recorded vote of nine to one, members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Sles, McCurry, Hunt, Samwell, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, Mayor Davis, members opposed, Counselor Van Tilburg.
All right, we'll move to 12.1.2, which is Blue Cycling, Blue Box Recycling Program. Counselors Sullivan asked for this to be separated because of conflict. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote.
Item 12.22 carries unanimously on recorded vote of nine to zero, yielding Counselor Sullivan's conflict of interest. Members voting in favor, Counselors Sles, McCurry, Hunt, Van Tilburg, Samwell, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, and Mayor Davis.
All right, now we'll move on to 12.1.4, which is the Bradford Airport Board Report. Counselor Martin, you asked for this to be separated.
Yes, thank you. The airport board had a meeting between when this came to committee, the whole, and now when it's coming to council. And the the issue of the large increase in rent on the T-hangers came up. And the board passed a resolution that requesting that this be deferred until additional information can be obtained because it was, the recommendation was made on one comparator. And one comparator isn't much of a information to go on, especially when they were suggesting an increase greater than what that comparator was. We've since, just yesterday, I received an email that has the rates from eight different airports regarding the T-hangers. I can read out all the dollar values if you like, but basically, half of them are more than what Bradford is before the 20% increase. And the other half are above. But when it comes to the proposed increase to to 611, there's only one that's higher. So our comparators show that the the increase that we're proposing is over and above what the market suggests is a fair price for a T-hanger. And including one airport in Grimsby, where they had, their their rate is 428. They had gone up to 800 in 2021, but had to revert due to an exodus of tenants. So they had to go back down to the 428 in order to salvage keeping the the hangers rented. So I'd like to move that Clause B two. Be deferred until the airport board has a chance to see these numbers and make a better recommendation as to what the T hangar rents should be.
So can you be a little more specific? Can we defer it to the February cycle? That would give the airport board time to review it in January, at its January meeting.
That's acceptable, yeah.
Okay, all right, so it's a motion to defer the increase in the hangar rate. That's B two.
Correct.
To the February cycle. So you're moving that, and the secondary again is?
Counsel McCurry.
Counsel McCurry, all right. Discussion, there is no discussion on the motion to defer other than as to time and place. So, I'll call the vote.
The deferral clause B two carries on a recorder vote of nine to one, members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Schles, McCurry, Van Touborke, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, Mayor Davis. Members opposed, Counsel Hunt.
Well, we now have the balance of that motion.
Yeah, I'd love to speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
We received a memo from staff indicating that. This report does not include the inflationary increases for the next two years in the multi-year budget. I believe that was an oversight and I have no problem with amending this to include the inflationary increases on all classifications of hanger. And land leases.
So you're making that as an amendment?
Yes.
All right, secondary, Counsel McCurry.
Counsel McCurry.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote on that amendment.
The amendment carries on a recorder vote of nine to one. Members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Schles, McCurry, Van Touborke, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, Mayor Davis, members opposed, Counsel Hunt.
Still on the floor, twelve point one point four, any further? Counsel Hunt, and then Counselor Skolik.
Yeah, I just wanted to counsel through you to staff, I think I asked this question at committee. Did this report not come from? The airport board? And if so, are we not kind of? So we're hearing that the airport board has made a different decision, but we haven't officially got. Something from the airport board changing their. Position, which was the original resolution we voted on at committee of.
Well, as someone who was at the airport board meeting. I can tell you there was a discussion about this, a concern that. There should be some more comparables. And so. Counselor Martin was asked to make a request for a deferral. So that the board could further consider. The issue of the comparables and what the rent might be.
Okay, so I guess my question to staff would be. This was an approved report that came from the airport board. But now the airport board is changing their mind because they did, so. I'm not on the airport board, obviously, so I'm somewhat confused. Did they or did they not agree to the? Fees and charges by law amendment from five oh nine twenty seven a month to six eleven twenty seven a month. At their meeting prior to this coming to committee of the whole.
I was at that meeting as well, the answer is yes.
The answer is yes, okay. And the reason I guess I'm not in favor of it is because I have not seen another report come from the airport board.
Well, we've already voted on the motion to defer. So that part of it has been deferred. Any further discussion on the resolution still, Counsel Sokoly, then Counsel McCurry?
Yes, I understand the. Concerns coming that we're hearing from the airport board regardless of having an updated report. And I, I'm getting the impression that they're trying to balance pressures from the existing tenants. And the pressures of maximizing our revenue there. So I was. Just hoping to maybe leave a suggestion with staff and with our representatives on the airport board, maybe we can look at doing something that grandfather's in existing tenants. So that their rents stay the same and maybe increase with just the. Inflationary increases rates that would normally come and, but new tenants coming in would be subject to some updated rates. Again, I don't know if that's of interest to them, but just thought I would plant that seed and see if maybe that's something that they're interested in doing there.
Counsel McCurry.
Mayor, thank you. Through you to staff. Is there an estimated timeframe for the creation of a municipal service corporation to manage and operate the airport?
Through your worship, I think I can address that question. So we've, we've met and talked about the path for the municipal corporation. Our intent, I believe, would be to be putting something in front of council probably in the end of Q one, twenty twenty five. And then probably looking towards a set of incorporations, incorporating resolutions by the end of Q two, twenty twenty five.
And. Which brings to mind another municipal service corporation question. Mr. Bradley. Do you have a recollection of when the room tax municipal service corporation will meet for the first time? I believe it's called the. Municipal accommodation tax. Supposed to room tax.
That's it, we're going no further than that one question. It ends in the same, it ends in the same two words. It's not relevant, I'm perhaps, Joe, if you can.
Certainly, Mayor, Joe Mito, acting director of economic development, tourism and cultural initiatives. With respect to the question from Counsel McCurry. Most of the legwork's been done with respect to the MSC. And we're hoping to have a subsequent report from this council for next month. With the possibility and hopefulness that we'll have its first meeting in February of twenty twenty five.
Mayor, let me commend you for the way you handled that, allowing me to have my answer and yet criticizing me for stray. It's most adept.
All right, I assume you don't have anything else that would be relevant to this particular matter? Any other discussion? Call the vote then on, final vote on twelve point one point four.
Item twelve point one point four, as amended, carries unanimously on recorded vote, members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Schles, McCurry, Hunt, Van Touborke, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, Mayor Davis.
All right, on to the next separate item, there's twelve point two point two. This is year two budget confirmation. Counselor Sullivan, you asked for this to be separated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this to be separated because in the report, it doesn't state. Originally, the Princess Anne Park splash pad was in the report. That was the notice of motion I had moved originally. It got put off a year for the Robert Moore Park to be done. But now it's been taken out of the budget completely. And I'd like there to be some form of amendment to put it back into the budget for your viewing pleasures.
Do you have an actual amendment?
I think I just said it. Princess Anne Park splash pad be put back into the twenty twenty five budget.
So I guess what you're saying is your. Amendment would be similar to what we dealt with a few minutes ago, that your amendment is that you're asking. The Princess Anne splash pad be included in the mayor's.
Yes.
Okay.
Seconded by Counsel McCurry.
All right. Counsel McCurry, can you confirm that? Good. All right, Counsel Caputo.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so as much as I appreciate the fact that Queen Anne Park should get a splash pad. Certainly, some decisions have to be made by council when it looks like how we want to be able to spend our monies in twenty twenty five and what we actually put forth. In reference to Robert Moore Park. The difference between Robert Moore Park and, and Queen Anne Park is the fact that there has been a updated. Site plan for that spot. And with the park at its point being sold, Robert Moore Park will no longer exist. Therefore, the construction of Robert Moore Park should supersede anything that's happening outside of that scope and purview. So I, I won't be supporting this tonight. Because again, I'm going to relate to the fact that Robert Moore Park needs to be constructed. And that we can revisit Queen Anne in twenty twenty seven. Thanks.
Counsel Schles and then Counsel Van Touborke.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I'm not sure if I can get clarity on. Is the attempt to put Princess Anne Park in and take Robert Moore out? If we're leaving both in, how do we fund the second one that's just been added? I guess I would ask Treasury.
Through the mayor and Counselor Schles, that's something staff would have to take back and consider. What's happening right now is a recommendation that that be included. In the budget that the mayor is going to bring forward in January, so staff would need to take that back and do some research. Whether that would need to be an operating budget increase or whether there was alternate funds available. But as the committee heard through the estimates process, our capital program is quite constrained right now with funding challenges.
Counselor Van Touborke.
If I recall correctly, Princess Anne Park is the one near the Helen Ave Apartments. And history tells me right, Counsel Weaver back in the day was championing to get exactly that in the Princess Anne Park, and that's got to be a decade ago. It's a community that certainly could use it. It's, it's, you know, that area there is probably more of the have not. Type kids. And to have a facility near them, by them, and that, quite frankly, has been championed by ward counselors in that area for ten years. I believe it's time. Now that being said. I know of another community that was caught in that same. Place in budget, in budget issues. With splash pads that were promised, and that was to the park. So we were also once promised a splash pad that kept getting delayed to budgetary issues. And. The resolution ended up being that if the community could raise a certain amount of money. The splash pads could go forward. And so I don't think that we should write off in its entirety. Any possibility of getting a splash pad in, in that Princess Anne Park. But we should look at options to do so. It's a community that I would support with the budget. But I certainly don't want to let them, leave them without one.
Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff, with this new multi-year budgeting process. Is this the right way to make suggestions to the mayor as to his budget? Through resolution at council?
Through the chair to Counsel Martin, yeah, this is certainly appropriate. The mayor, through strong mayor powers, directs the budget process, has requested meetings of the estimates committee to consider. Any suggestions to be made into that budget, so that those, this has come to the committee. And those recommendations are here now for ratification and can certainly be amended.
Okay, but members of council can also make suggestions directly to the mayor for things they'd like to see in the budget or taken out.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Hunt.
Thank you, and through you to staff, I don't have the actual budget documents in front of me, but my recollection was that we. Moved the entire splash pad program citywide.
Carry on, Counsel.
Didn't know who and it's not going to who. Okay, so yeah, just looking for clarification on that. Because I, I don't have the document in front of me now that we had estimates. But I thought we moved the entire splash pad program out because of constraints in the capital funding envelope.
Through you, Mayor Davis, that's correct. We moved it to begin in twenty twenty eight and onward. It was a fifteen year program funded every year, seven hundred and fifty thousand every year. So it's just shifted to start in twenty twenty eight rather than twenty twenty five.
Okay, so in that. Splash pad program capital budget. Was Princess Anne Park the number one? One that we moved, was, first of all, I guess, was there a priority ranking in, in that capital? Project?
Through you, Mayor Davis, so the Princess Anne Park and the other splash pads in the program were all based on the sizing of the splash pads, small, medium, or large. So depending on. What the budget would have for us that year, that's the splash pad we would put in. So seven hundred and fifty thousand a large would be about that whole budget. And then the smaller splash pads around two to three hundred thousand, and then three to six hundred thousand are medium. So it all depends on that. I don't have the priority listing, but I believe Princess Anne Park was one of the top priorities.
So. So I guess I'm just saying that from a budget perspective, that what we voted on was to move the entire splash pad program out. Because of funding constraints within the capital funding envelope, and so adding one park back in, in twenty twenty five. Kind of, I think, defeats the purpose of moving the program. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Skolik.
Can you remind me how many parks were included in the original? Plan for the splash pads?
Through you, Mayor Davis, yes, I can.
And specifically which parks they were, like, were there more than one in Ward one? I can't remember.
Through you, Mayor Davis, so in total, the report from twenty twenty three had seventeen recommended locations throughout all the wards. In. Some of those, like I said, were small, medium, large. Princess Anne was planned for a small or medium splash pad. So in Ward one. Anderson Park, Anderson Road is already open, Princess Anne, Brooklyn Park, Lines Park. And then Hickory Park, Ward two, Robert Moore Park, which we already discussed. Homedale Park, Rosewell Park, and Spring Gardens Park. Splash pads in Ward three, Burnley Park, Rye Park, Tranquility. Ward four, idle paths already existing. Andrew Peak Park, Johnson Park. Ward five, there's Charlie, Charlie Ward Park, Elvy Park, Mohawk Park. So I may have missed some, but that's the gist from the.
Did I review them from Ward one in there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, I'll call the vote then. On the Princess Anne. Directions, I can call that.
The amendment is lost on recorder vote of four to six, members voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Schles, McCurry, and Touborke. Members opposed, Counselors Samuel, Hunt, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis.
Any other debate? Read twelve point two point two. Other than I'll say this, that just a reminder that the mayor's budget, the timetable is, that I will be submitting that on or before January the third. So that budget would be based in part on what we decide tonight, which is compilation of the decisions you made from the estimates committee meetings. And also, if over the next several days, there is something you want me to include or exclude. From the budget that we've looked at. Just pick up the phone and give me a call. And then beyond, once January third, then we have, what is the date we've got? January fourteenth will be the date on which council will meet to determine whether you wish, we, council wishes to make any amendments to the mayor's budget. So to see my budget, January third, we'll meet on the fourteenth. Counsel McCurry.
Mayor, thank you very much for that. Some of us have already made those suggestions.
Some of us have already made those suggestions to you, and I, I hope that, uh, you'll give consideration to what's been suggested today. And I would also hope that you will consider, uh, not only the needs of the corporation and the city of Branford to serve its residents, but also the ability of residents to pay.
All right, with that, I'll call the vote then on 12.2.2.
Item 12.2.2 carries a recorded vote of nine to one. Uh, members of council vote in favor, Counselors Sless, McCurry, Hunt, and Tilburg, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis. Members opposed, Counselor Sullivan.
All right, we're gonna move now to 12.2.3. Uh, we're dealing with this separately because Counselor Caputo has a conflict in respect to police and Counselor Sless you have a conflict in respect to the John Noble Home. So we'll take each of those individuals, deal with those first. So let's talk about the Police Services Board. Before I call the vote on that, I know we had some information that came to us today from the Police Services Board. There was a meeting this morning. Uh, Droual, if you please summarize what the impact, what those decisions were and the impact that has on the deliberations of the estimates committee.
Uh, yes, to you, Mayor Davis. So the police board met this morning. Um, they did make changes, um, to their, um, operating and capital budgets. Uh, they did make, uh, over $217,000 of reductions to their capital budget. Um, they did address the capital funding shortfall issue that was, um, discussed at the meeting on January, uh, sorry, on December 4th, um, within their, um, operating budget. Uh, so the combined impact now, um, of the police, um, budget, uh, the board approved a 9.95% budget. We do combine that with all the other board and agency budgets, um, and do apply proportionate share of assessment growth. So in the memo sent to council earlier today, um, the combined increase for the all local boards and agencies is 8.04%.
All right, so any other discussion on the police service budget? Seeing none, I'll call the vote on that.
The police budget carries unanimously a recorded vote of nine to zero. Members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, Hunt, and Tilburg, Samuel, Martin, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis.
All right, so now deal with the John Noble Home, uh, budget because of Counselor Sless's conflict. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote on that.
The John Noble Home budget carries unanimously on a recorded vote of nine to zero. Uh, members voting in favor, Counselors Van Tilburg, Samuel, Hunt, McCurry, Martin, Caputo, Sullivan, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis.
So that leaves the balance of the local boards' budgets. Uh, Droual, that would be what, the health unit and the library?
Yes, Brent County Health Unit, um, the Brentford Public Library, and the BIA.
Right. And have we received a response from the health unit in respect to our decision?
Uh, with respect to the funding, um, issue matter? Uh, no, we have not.
All right, any discussion, uh, in respect to those parts? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
The approval of the remaining local boards' budgets carries unanimously on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, Hunt, and Tilburg, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis.
All right, so now move to 12.3.6. This is the Citizens Remuneration Review Committee Report. And Counselor Sullivan, you asked for this to be separated, and I believe also Counselor Hunt, you have in mind amendment. Uh, Counselor Sullivan, you asked for it to be separated, so you go first.
I only requested it to be separated for voting purposes.
Counselor Hunt.
Uh, yeah, so I'm, uh, proposing an amendment, seeking a seconder, um, that, uh, item G, that effective for the new 2026 term of council, the remuneration for city councilors be set at, um, so striking the rest of that paragraph and replacing it with an annual honorarium of $42,523. And if I can just speak to that, that is the, um, that is the dollar value that.
So who's your seconder?
Oh, sorry. So seeking a seconder.
Not seeing a seconder. Oh, Counselor Samuel, go ahead.
Okay. So this removes the, um, level, uh, putting us in line with the level of the entry-level administrative assistant and basically, um, just takes out all of the, um, messy wording and basically just replaces it with the simple annual honorarium of $42,523, which is the recommendation of the committee. So we're not changing the dollar value, we're just removing the, um, the level, the pay level, or sorry, the pay grid, um, that we use for staff, um, removing the $32.71 an hour, um, and the 25 hours. So it's just basically giving us an annual honorarium matching what the committee came up with.
So you're stripping out some of the wording, the explanation, but leaving the dollar amount in?
Yeah, and it's the exact same dollar amount.
Exact same, good. All right, Counselor Martin.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I won't be supporting this. The recommendation from the committee by putting, tying it to a position in the grid allows for annual increases to the next council's remuneration instead of leaving it stagnant for four years and then a big crease, increase for the next council. Uh, I think, uh, the committee made an excellent recommendation in recommending this position on the grid. If you get hung up on the title that the grid is for, then find another spot where maybe 15 hours is a different rate of pay and it ends up with the same price. But I believe this is a, a very good idea, tying it into the grid so that we get, that next council gets annual increases instead of one in four years.
Counselor Scory.
Uh, Counselor Martin took most of my speaking, um, points there. Um, I don't know why the mover of this is so upset to be equated to an administrative assistant. Um, I, these were comments that came from our last meeting. I personally am thrilled to be at the same level as an admin assistant. Those are absolute bosses working in those roles who are juggling 4,000 balls at once, uh, very similar to what we're doing. And for that, I am proud, I'm happy to be here at step three, level D, in the city of Branford's economic grid. So I won't be supporting this.
Counsel, Counselor Samuel.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor, um, to staff, could I ask the question if we're already, or if there would already be an annual increase that even if we weren't on those steps? I believe there already is an annual increase that would happen. If there's a staff person that could answer that.
For members of staff that can, oh?
Yep. Through the mayor to, uh, Counselor Samuel Anita Salo, key director of Human Resources, the honorarium bylaw currently, uh, provides for annual economic increases. If the recommendation is changed to $42,523, that's what it would be as of January 1st, 2027, but that would not include any economic adjustments to that rate, um, for 2025 and 2026.
Would it, would it include economic adjustments from '27 on?
Yes, that's correct. That's the current provision in the honorarium bylaw.
Okay, great. Anything else, Counselor Samuel?
No, that's great, thank you.
Counselor McCurry.
Mayor, thank you very much. Well, it couldn't have been more than an hour ago when members of this committee said that we shouldn't be meddling in things like code of conduct complaints. We should take what the integrity commissioner says and apply it and not weigh in with our own opinions. And I think it's, um, a comment that applies equally to what's before us today. Uh, we chose many years ago to engage a citizens committee to make these sorts of recommendations to us to take it out of our hands completely. Uh, and now there seems to be some desire to dick with this to no end. Uh, the amendment before us tonight adds no value to what's before us. It strips out a lot of language that staff and the committee, uh, have recommended to us, and I think we are well advised simply to let it be the way it's presented and quit messing around with this and just let that committee's recommendation float to the top here.
All right, I'll call the vote on the amendment.
The amendment is lost in a recorded vote of one to nine. Members in favor, Counselor Hunt. Members opposed, Counselors Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, and Tilburg, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis.
Any further discussion on 12.3.6? Seeing none, I'll call the vote.
Item 12.3.6 carries on a recorded vote of nine to one. Members of council voting in favor, Counselors Van Tilburg, Samuel, Hunt, McCurry, Martin, Sless, Caputo, Sokoly, Mayor Davis. Members opposed, Counselor Sullivan.
All right, last item that's been separated is 12.4, the Planning Committee Report regarding the bylaw in PZ 1624-571 West Street. Counselor McCurry, you asked this to be separate.
Mayor, thank you, yes, I did. Um, what was before us at Planning Committee this past Thursday was a zoning amendment to permit the construction of a 10-story retirement home at, uh, 571 West Street, the former location of CKBC Radio. There are 239 dwelling units, 53 of which are two beds, uh, 159 are one-bed and the rest are studios, uh, some ground floor commercial. Uh, at Planning Committee, it was noted that this is an excellent builder with a local track record, um, of excellence who deals with any and all, uh, complaints of the neighbors in a timely fashion and makes sure they get looked after. The building is on the boundary of two wards. It actually will be in the fourth ward, but it's across the street from a significant, uh, townhouse condominium development in the third ward at number 570. And, uh, Counselor Martin and I have heard from constituents who are concerned about the impact this will have on traffic. Uh, so at the Planning Committee hearing, uh, we, uh, had it confirmed that Counselor Martin and I will be able to participate in the site planning process and will do our best to, uh, try to mitigate, to some extent, uh, the impacts on traffic impacting across the street on the townhouse development. And, uh, we'll be doing our very best to get the best outcome we possibly can and mitigate the impact, uh, once complete.
All right, call the vote.
Item 12.4.1 carries unanimously on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Members of council vote in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, Hunt, and Tilburg, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis.
So we have no urgent reports on the agenda. There's no resolutions on the agenda. There's one notice of motion. Counselor Sless, please read the title of your motion.
Retroactive rebate for the Bright United Way 2024.
All right, we'll move on to bylaws. Counselor Sullivan, I believe you have the motion for a second reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by my ward mate. That lead be given to the mover and secretary to introduce the following bylaws for first and second reading. Bylaw 179 to amend parking bylaw 14488, being a bylaw to regulate parking in the city of Branford, uh, Murray Street, eastward, uh, east ward neighborhood traffic safety review. Bylaw 180 to amend, uh, parking bylaw 37-83, being a bylaw to regulate traffic in the city of Branford, Murray Street, east ward neighborhood traffic safety review 2024. Bylaw 81, uh, 181, being a bylaw to amend bylaw 021 2024, being a bylaw to fix fees and charges to be collected by the corporation and the city of Branford for 2024 to 2027, uh, that being the, uh, Branford Airport Board Report 2024 1118. Uh, bylaw 182, uh, bylaw to amend bylaw 70-210, being a bylaw to adopt various policies of the city of Branford and to create a corporate policy, uh, manual act of transportation, missing sidewalk link. Uh, bylaw 183, being a bylaw to confirm and authorize participation in the Homer's primary pension plan and the retirement compensation arrangements for the Homer's primary pension plan, each amendment amended from time to time of the employees, counselors, and head of council of the corporation and the city of Branford identified herein and to repeal. Bylaw 84-64, bylaw 16479, bylaw 18394, bylaw 170 2002, and bylaw 138 2006. Bylaw 184 to amend a bylaw number 160-90, being a bylaw to regulate the use of lands and the location and use of buildings and structures in the city of Branford. Bylaw 185 to amend bylaw number 124-2024, being a bylaw to regulate the use of lands and the location and use of buildings and structures in the city of Branford. Bylaw 186, being a bylaw to amend chapter 26, boards advisory committees of the city of Branford Municipal Code 2024 449. And bylaw 187, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation and the city of Branford with respect to the meeting held on December 19th, 2024.
Anybody want any of the bylaws separated for discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote for a second reading.
The first and second reading of all bylaws carries unanimously on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Members of council voting in favor, Counselors Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, Hunt, and Tilburg, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis.
Counselor Caputo, if you'd please read the resolution for the third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Sless. That all bylaws, having received a first and second reading, be taken as read a third time and finally passed and signed by the mayor and the clerk.
Does anybody want any of the bylaws separated for discussion at third reading? Seeing no raised hands, I'll call the vote.
The third and final reading of all bylaws carries unanimously on a recorded vote of 10 to 0. Members of council voting in favor, Counselor Sullivan, Sless, McCurry, Hunt, and Tilburg, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sokoly, and Mayor Davis.
All right, while I sign the bylaws, we'll move to ward announcements. We'll start with Counselor Van Tilburg.
Surprise, I just wanna thank you, Mayor, on what a wonderful job you've done tonight. And I wanna wish, uh, you, the mayor, and all members of council, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, as well as all the citizens in the community, because you're not going to see us until the new year.
Counselor Scory.
Oh, you're a little erratic tonight, um, with your selections. Um, I don't have any major announcements, just a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays if you don't celebrate Christmas, and I look forward to seeing everyone in 2025.
Counselor Sless.
Yeah, just so you encourage everybody to get to the Civic Center tomorrow night to support the Bulldogs. They're on a roll and, uh, they're moving up quickly in the standings, so, um, I know the games are sold out, but if you can find tickets online from people who can't make the game that are selling their tickets, by all means, jump in. It's, uh, it's well worth the visit. And to all the residents of Ward Two in particular, but the city in general, uh, have a very, very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year.
Counselor Caputo.
Not much to report for Ward Two news, but, uh, I do want to wish everyone here on council some well-deserved time with family. Enjoy, have a wonderful and Merry Christmas to all the staff, to all the residents of the city, and really enjoy and spend some quality time with family, because really, this is what it's all about, this joy season. So, uh, bless all of you and have a wonderful Christmas.
Counselor McCurry.
Uh, Mayor, thank you, uh, to everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Uh, check the city's website, there are a lot of closures around the Christmas holidays. Um, mostly we're open for business, thank you.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to announce that Mayor Davis, Counselor McCurry. Happy to announce that Mayor Davis, Counsel McCurry, and I attended the opening of Jersey Mike's Sub Shop on December 9th. They make very good subs and I've passed the information on to the clerk so that council may try some at an occasion where we're provided with a meal. Also coming up on December 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Wayne Gretzky Sports Center, is going to be a free skate sponsored by Counsel McCurry and myself. So you're all, anybody's welcome to come out and enjoy a skate at the Gretzky Center. Hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for that. There'll be, I believe, there'll be free hot chocolate. And it should be a good time for everyone involved. And I too would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays if you don't celebrate Christmas and a Happy New Year as well. Thank you.
Counsel Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Merry Christmas to everybody, staff, council, residents at home. Enjoy your time with your family, be safe. This is the time of year when the roads get kind of crazy, we start getting black ice and stuff. So just be a little extra careful. I know things are hectic and people want to get places, but let's not put each other at risk. And if you're not busy, obviously, December 31st, Sanderson Center, Harmony Square, come on down for the New Year's Eve festivities.
Counsel Hunt.
Well, Counselor Sullivan stole my thunder, but anyway, for anyone that's looking for something to do on New Year's Eve, myself and Greg will also be at the Sanderson Center celebrating New Year's Eve and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Last but not least, Counsel Samuel.
Thank you. So I too just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday Season to council, council members and staff, as well as the whole community. And I was also going to mention the celebration for New Year's Eve at the Sanderson Center. So I hope to see everyone there. And I just also wanted to just, just say a big thank you for everybody that came out to Counsel Sullivan and my Christmas skate that we held and for the donations that we received to be able to give to the Why Not Youth Center. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I also wanted to, I was going to mention New Year's Eve at the Harmony Square. And I think I should mention that the three concerts in the Sanderson Center, there's, it's preceded by a free skate at Harmony Square. And just so you know who will be playing, we have at 9:00, 8:50 PM in Sanderson Center, it is Freeloader playing hard rock and punk, followed by Helen Back performing a tribute to AC/DC. So if you're a big AC/DC fan, Sanderson Center is the place to be New Year's Eve, of course, all of which is followed by fireworks. And I wanted to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas as well and a Happy New Year. One announcement, I think, of relevance to the residents of Ward 5. It's the GRCA Board meeting on Friday that I attended. The GRCA Board approved retaining a consultant performance environmental assessment of a number of ice jam, Branford Ice Jam remediation projects. The intent being to determine the environmental feasibility of those projects, which if preceded with, and we hope they will be preceded with, will greatly reduce and minimize the risk to eagle place in other parts of Ward 2 from ice jam flooding. So with that piece of good news, for the benefit of residents of Ward 5 and 2, and parts of Ward 1. Meeting's adjourned.